With all of the wording on the black screen, screens, remember that? So I don't know if I have enough now, but um let's get the people first that don't have any. And then if there's uh some left, then those that want a new one can get one. So you have the writing in the in the black screens. And if not, we can get you some uh next time as well.
We need these designed for.
Yeah, we'll get to you. We don't really need those right now. I'll get those next time. But the the PowerPoint slides, the outline is the most important thing at this time. Also, so you know, thank you, Brian Hall here. He's uh videoing this and uh the first one is up on our YouTube channel. Back over there, Jody, I think back. Back in the back yet, yeah. Uh the the first one is up on the YouTube channel and then obviously uh then the rest of them will be as well. If you if you wanna go back and watch it again, which huh, we'll see that, but um. You really wanna do that, but it's there for you. If you want to watch it again, or it's there if you miss one, or if you can't make it next Wednesday, know that it's there. The packet of the PowerPoints, that's the whole class there. So you got the whole outline on the PowerPoint. So that's complete. So if you can't make it, um you can watch the YouTube channel. And I think this time, Brian, we he uh I told him, I shared with him I have a PowerPoint. He didn't know that last Wednesday. So he's got it pointed towards the screen too, so you can see the slides as they um transition as well uh on the video. But you don't wanna know that because you're here. Was that you vibrating? Someone was vibrating. Maybe it's me right down here. It's like the old story of Pastor Roy Radloff. Many of you know the our sainted Pastor Roy here. He was a retired pastor. He was up in the pulpit preaching away and someone's horn was beeping out in the parking lot over there. It's just bop, 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 bop. And so he stopped preaching and he said, everyone, check your keys to see if it's your horn. And everyone's doing their thing and it's still going. And he goes, oh, well, I better check mine. And it was his in his pockets. He probably hit it when he was trying to hit his mic button. Bop, bop, bop. Like, what'd you do, park right by the building over there, Pastor Roy? Well, uh tonight, we're gonna start on amillennialism. So for those that uh weren't here, it looks like that slide. Uh it has amillennialism. It's I don't know how many back it is. Uh several? Page five, hell? Okay, page five, uh amillennialism. That's where we're gonna start. I'm gonna back, what's that? I'm gonna back up just a little bit and just remind ourselves of um what pre-millennial dispensationalism is. I talked a lot about that. And for those that are new, why did I go there? Because pre-millennial dispensationalism is probably the most viewed end time uh theological view out there other than amillennialism, the historic view of the church and the one that we believe in as well, the LCMS and uh the historic Christian church. And tonight, we get there on how we transition to get this pre-millennial dispensationalism into theological thought uh here in the United States and then beyond. So pre-millennial dispensationalism, then, uh a description is this, and I know many of you've heard this, but it's taking a literal view of all the descriptions of the end times in the Bible. So it's it's a literal view of anything end times. So whatever Jesus says on end times is literal. Whatever happens in the Book of Revelation is literal. And especially the Book of Revelation, they say it's straight line chronology. And that's well, it's gonna happen. For instance, everything in the everything in the in Revelation is like reading a novel, like a regular novel, right? Where each chapter and events take place after each chapter and events, and it's a continuing story. Revelation is not like that. That's the last section of this study is we we get into how do we uh interpret Revelation? How do we read it? Um so that is a a description then, right? You've taken everything literal. And then a definition of a pre-millennial dispensationalist view of the end times is a dispensation. So I'm gonna define it here now. A dispensation in this context means a period of time in the unfolding of God's dealing with humanity. And as we said last time, according to the pre-millennial dispensationalists, from now on, I'm just gonna say PD, okay? Uh so according to the PD view, God acts differently in human to humanity or towards humanity, towards us, His creation in each of the dispensations. And for a uh a pre-millennial dispensationalist, a DP, there's seven, seven, seven dispensations. And I don't have the next slide in there. But there's innocence. That's before the fall. The second dispensation is conscience from from the fall to Noah. Forgot to put the slide in there. Number three, the third dispensation is human government from Noah to Abraham. Now, this is the dispensationalist view. There's seven dispensations and God treats humanity different in each dispensation. Okay, so the the uh fourth dispensation then is promise. It's called promise, which is Abraham to Moses, right? Mo- uh Abraham, we get the the grace-based covenant promise. And then all the way to Moses. And then the fifth dispensation is law, which is uh Moses to Christ. And then the seventh dispensation is the kingdom. We're in the sixth dispensation according to disp- uh the 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 PDs, pre-millennial dispensationalists. We're in the we're in the sixth dispensation, the 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 of the church of grace. The seventh one is the millennium, the thousand-year deal, and we're gonna talk about that. So there's kind of a a fast and uh definition of dispensationalism. Here's amillennialism, and this is what the view that we have. As I keep saying, it's the view of the historic Christian church until about eighteen hundred. And we're gonna get there tonight to explain how that all took place. So amillennialism, so a description, should have description, not definition, but a description of this is is the view, our view, amillennialism, a description. It's the view that takes this thousand-year language as figurative. And it's figurative as a reference to the air references to the era of the church. Which lasts then from the ascension of Christ to his final return. A figurative thousand-year reign. So when Christ ascended into heaven, the figurative thousand years began. We're in it right now. And it won't end until Jesus comes back to make a new heaven and a new earth and to judge the sheep and the goats. Okay? And as noted above, this has been the dominant position of the Christian church throughout history. I'm gonna say it all the time because that's the truth. And it is our position in the LCMS as well. The Lutheran Church Missouri Synod and most Lutheran churches unless they've gone off the rails. There could be some very liberal Lutheran churches that have this pre-millennial dispensationalist view of end times. The PD interpretation of the second coming of Jesus looks at Scripture primarily from the viewpoint of Christ's future unfinished work. That's a pre-millennial dispensationalist view of script of the second coming as they look at Scripture. They are focused on the unfinished work of Jesus, the future work of Jesus. We, us in the traditional view of end times in the church and us as the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod, we believe that the biblical center and the biblical revelation is justification by grace through faith in the finished work of Jesus Christ on the cross and the empty tomb. Okay, did you catch that? Their view is at the unfinished work of Christ. Our view is at the finished work of Christ. He's done it all already. It's done. I think he said on the cross in John, chapter nineteen, verse thirty, it is finished. Paul says in First Corinthians, chapter two, verse two, he says, I knew nothing amongst you but Christ crucified. Now, you think if there would have been more to it at those junctures, there would have been more said. Now, we can't always use the argument of silence. That doesn't work all the time, but I think in this case it can. Just because uh Jesus didn't say uh talk about the end times and get specific doesn't uh doesn't mean that our the view isn't right, the traditional view. Because a lot of dispensationalists go to that and say, well, Jesus never talked about that, but it does in Revelation. Well, there's a lot of things Jesus didn't talk about. So that's why I say the argument of silence doesn't always work. So uh here's a question. It's on your, you have this uh slide. How do these differences in the central teachings of Scripture affect the understanding of end times? Where they're looking at the unfinished work still yet to come by Jesus and we focus on the finished work already of the cross and the empty tomb and the ascension at the right hand of the Father? So how do these different views of the central teaching of the Scripture affect your understanding of the end times? Well, the answer is this. The pre-millennial dispensationalists focus less on the work of Christ on the cross and more upon current events in the unfolding of Scripture. We see that happening right now, right? The evangelicals are trying to read what's happening within the countries of 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 the world right now, relaying it to Scripture and saying, wow, that's how come the uh events of the current world are happening because it says this in the Bible. You guys listen to religious stations at all? I'm kind of a religious station nut. I always say it. I go there to learn what not to do. That's not always true. One of these days, I'm gonna have one of those do-rags in my sleeve, though. See, I told you I learned something. That's what not to do. So I repeat myself a little bit here now. Focusing on Jesus and his glory results in an emphasis on his power, on his sovereignty, on his wrath, and on his judgment. So it tends to neglect his mercy, Jesus's mercy. It tends to uh neglect his grace for sinners when you're focused on sovereignty, wrath, judgment, and power. That's what a dispensationalist focus on, right? Because they're focused on what's yet to come instead of what's already happened. So a PD's view on faith as a means of avoiding suffering under God's wrath here on earth, while we teach that faith is the instrument of what? Forgiveness, life, and salvation. If you want to, Ephesians, chapter two. I'll read it for you, of course. Ephesians, chapter two, verses eight and nine. Ephesians two, eight and nine. For it is by grace you have been saved through faith. This is not of yourselves; it is a gift of God, not by works, so that no one can boast. For we are God's workmanship created in Christ Jesus to do good works which God has prepared in advance for us to do. We are saved through grace by faith, not by what's gonna happen at the end, by his power and sovereignty and judgment and wrath. Those things might come. Wrath and judgment and his power, they are gonna come. But they aren't our concern because we're focused on the finished work of 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 Jesus Christ because you're already a saint. You're already in heaven. You already got a foot over on the other side. We don't need to worry about those things. Okay? Saved by grace through faith. It's already a done deal. We don't need to look out for something more. The PD interpretation of the Bible shifts its focus away from Jesus's fulfillment in the Old Testament promises as our sin-bearing substitute. Who alone gives us eternal life with God that engenders hope in the midst of earthly suffering. We're gonna suffer on earth, right? You are suffering right now, many of you. I'm glad it's two thousand twenty-four in this guy's life. I don't know what a year's, you know, a calendar date change isn't really gonna make a difference in a whole lot other than in my brain and maybe in yours too, you know? It's like, oh, a new year, but there's really nothing different. So anyway, that was the amillennial uh view there. You wanna turn your uh? Oh, there goes my battery. Always battery issues. Technology's great. There we go. I just spun the batteries, Chad. Do some do some battery spinning. Uh so the next slide you see up there and on your sheet is this, a diagram of millennial views. We went over it kind of fast at the beginning. We talked a little bit about the dispensational millennialism, the one that I'm focusing on because it seems like here in the United States especially, that is the main view of evangelicals and many Protestants. And then the next one you can see is the historical pre-millennialism. You can see that in the historic pre-millennialism, there wasn't all that other. When you look up at the dispensational chart, there isn't all this secret return of Jesus and the resurrection of the just and the rapture, and then the seven-year tribulation, and then the Armageddon, and then the visible return of Christ, and then thousand-year reign. And then there's the little season of of Satan, and then the resurrection of the unjust. So they got one, two, three, maybe even four appearances of Christ before the end of the world. And I'm saying that amillennial or the historic view of the of the church on end times says there's one. So here's a chart going down. Uh then there's the post-millennialism. So once pre-millennialism, like the there's gonna be the 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 resurrection and the second advent before the thousand years, and then the post you see is after the thousand years. And then amillennialism on the bottom, the one that we and the historic church prescribed to. I'll give you a second to look at them. Again, these are the four accepted millennial uh views over history. The bottom, it goes from, you know, the historic and then how it from uh amillennial, post, pre, uh historic, pre, and then the dispensational, they all, it goes from bottom to up on how they developed. All right, any questions so far? So right now, then, what I'm gonna do is give you a little bit of a summary, just a few paragraphs of the book, the first book of the Left Behind series. Okay, I don't know if many of you are familiar with that. It's in your PowerPoint slides. There's a picture of the original book earlier on in the slides. But uh here's how it goes, okay? So I'm I'm reading from the book, actually. At the start of the book, it goes like this. On a seven forty-seven bound for London's Heathrow uh Heath Heathrow Airport from Chicago, the flight attendants suddenly find half the seats empty, except for the clothes, wedding rings, and dental fillings of Christians who had been suddenly swept up to heaven. Down on the ground, cars begin crashing. Spouses wake up to find only bedclothes next to them, and all children under twelve disappear as well. There's that age of accountability aspect. The pilot of the seven forty-seven, Rayford Steele, soon comes to the sickening realization that the rapture has just happened. So this is that pre-millennial dispensationalist view that there's gonna be a rapture, right? While the world's going on like it is right now and people are just gonna disappear, except your watches and your clothes and your fillings and your teeth. How about if you got a partial? Suppose that'll be laying there too. Jeez, the guy didn't even have real teeth. Sorry. So this is still from the book then, right? This is elsewhere, Pastor Bruce Barnes and his sec- church secretary Loretta, both of whom are left behind, quickly realize what is going on. The next eleven books in the series chronicle the tribulations suffered by those left behind and their struggle to survive as they seek to spread the gospel of Christ to a dying world. Uh last week, I talked about uh we talked about Noah just a little bit. And we said with Noah's story, right? It was good to be left behind. Because only eight survived the flood, so you know, just a kind of a little take on the Left Behind series. It's for the here, it's bad. For reality, uh it's good to be left behind. Well, at the same time, uh in the movie then, it unfolds like a disaster movie, the Left Behind movie. Car crashes, pandemonium initially caused by the rapture itself. So the whole world is in chaos because many of the Christians were taking up, including all kids twelve and under. So how would you like your kids all of a sudden to disappear? They had things called the wrath of the uh wrath of the lamb earthquake in the movie. Oceans of blood, fiery hailstones. Sound familiar? Sounds like plagues, right? World War Three, war in the Middle East. And it's all leading up to Armageddon. So if you look back on that chart that you have on the pre-millennial dispensationalist view, there's a place called Armageddon, and that's when it really gets bad. Now, according to Lahey and to Jenkins, the gentleman that put together the Left Behind book and the series of books and the movie, but according to them and their novels with their fictionalized accounts of the rapture and the rise of the Antichrist during the the seven years of tribulation, they say reflects the true meaning of the Bible. Now, the book and the or I should say the series of books of the Left Behind and the movie is a rep- is a representation of this theology of pre-millennial dispensationalism. That's why I'm talking about it so much, so we can cut it down and compare those two, pre-millennial and amillennial, what we believe in. Another person that you may have heard of is Hal Lindsey. You ever hear of Hal Lindsey on you religious station nuts? Uh he had a lot of information out. In fact, I think he had a a book and a movie out that propagated the pre-millennial dispensationalist view called The Late Great Planet Earth. So summarizing the general theological orientation then of this pre-millennial dispensationalist view, again, a little repeating here, but so first of all, the central theological focus for a pre-millennial dispensationalist end time view is less on the person of Jesus and more on the historical events and developments that the authors, specifically of these movies and books and other places, believe will unfold in the last days. And they use the scriptures then and the prophetic writings to fill in the blanks. So it looks biblical. Second, when attention is given to the person and work of Christ, it doesn't consistently maintain the central focus on the com- on the completed work and sufficient work of Jesus, you know, his suffering on the cross. Again, it focuses on the power, the sovereignty, the judgment, the wrath. I mean, come on, think of the wrath that people are going to be part of if a rapture takes believers and uh cars are crashing and people wake up with their loved ones gone and their kids are gone and that's horrible. That's not, I don't I don't see that good at all. Because if that happened today, would you think, oh, Jesus must have took them? No, someone broke into the house and stole my people. So rather, the the central focus is on Christ's future unfinished work, right? Again, namely his second, third, fourth coming, however many, depending on whoever you talk to. So as a result, the emphasis then tends to be, again, on God's end time work and not on the work already done. His grace, his mercy, his patience, Jesus's patience, his forgiveness for sinners offered through Jesus, his compassion. I think of Jesus every time he jumped out of the boat and went on shore and people were chasing after him. The first thing the writers of the gospel say is he had compassion on them. Like sheep without a shepherd. There's this uh theological view that uh we looked a lot at at the seminary based on Luther's writings. It's called theo- a the- a theology of the cross and theology of glory. A theology of glory looks at that end time power, sovereignty, wrath, and judgment. And a theology of the cross, of course, focuses on you know who, Jesus and the cross and everything that goes with that, right? Forgiveness, salvation. That's the why why we preach like we preach in the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod. We preach law and gospel. We started drawing in all the aspects of all the wrongs in the world rather than just trying to stay, you know, and and preach a little law and sin and some things to think about, but to bring in all the aspects of the political realm, what's happening out there into the church. We don't want that. This is a place to come to get away from that. To be brought back to what's the main purpose of Jesus coming, right? Forgiveness. And that's our forgiveness, but then learning maybe to do it with each other too. That's a big aspect in my book. Especially in your circle of influence. All right, gonna stop there because the next thing we go to is oops, sorry, there's Left Behind. Sorry, I missed another slide. Oh, yeah, there's The Late Great Planet Earth. There's The Left Behind, the novel, first class, that's the the first of the books. Uh there's the Hal Lindsey book. Now, we're going to the rapture and the millennial, millennium. So this is where we're gonna get to the background here because the first person to was there any questions or anything before we go on? Guess I was gonna pause there. Okay, the first person to propose this pre-millennial dispensational end time scenario was a man named uh an Anglican priest named John Nelson Darby. He was a traveling evangelical preacher. There's a picture of him right there or supposed picture. I don't know what he looks like, but that's what Google said he looked like. So that's John Nelson Darby. He lived eighteen hundred to eighteen eighty-two. He was one of the uh chief founders of the Plymouth Brethren Movement, I guess I'll call it, the Plymouth Brethren Movement. And dispensationalism in itself arose from the reaction to the Church of England and the widely-held view of post-millennialism at that point. And you can look at your chart. That's why I gave it to you. So post-millennialism is that there will be uh Jesus will come back, there'll be his second advent, and then post that will be a thousand years of whatever it is. Maybe it's the Christians living with Jesus in a perfect utopian world. You read different things. This is why it's so convoluted. And I'm gonna share one with you here that's really crazy. When we get there, it's the Seventh Day Adventist view of their end time from the theological writings. But let's stay with this. So we've got Darby here, right? Plymouth Brethren Movement reacting to the Church of England and their view of, uh, uh, post-millennialism on their theological end time view. Darby arrived in the United States in eighteen sixty-two. It was the first of his seven visits. And then hearing this new understanding of Christ's second coming, there was a minister named Cyrus Schofield. There he is. Cyrus Schofield. These two guys would meet here in the United States. And as they were meeting, they expanded this evangelical idea of this end time theology. And what came out of it then in nineteen oh nine was the Schofield Bible. Nineteen oh nine. And its additions that went on. But what happened in here? As Darby and Schofield collaborated, Schofield writing his reference Bible, he divided God's end time, thousand year reign into seven ages or these dispensations. So what I'm saying then in nineteen oh nine is the first time that showed up. The seven dispensations. That I told you about at the beginning of the class, right? Nineteen oh nine, that's the first time that's ever been, uh, read about in Schofield's reference Bible in collaboration with this gentleman named John Darby. We're in the sixth, remember I told you we're in the sixth dispensation, the church era? It began with the, uh, death of Jesus. So here Darby and Schofield, their vision included a rapture in which Christians would be snatched up into heaven before the beginning of this increasingly hell-like seven year tribulation. Again, you can look at your chart in your, on, on the PowerPoint slide. So today dispensationalism is by far the most prominent form of millennialism. And that's why we're taking that one on against what we believe. Maybe you've heard some of these guys, uh, or there's women as well, don't get me wrong. But some of the guys, uh, as I grew up, I thought of like Jerry Falwell. Remember him? The old timers like me. Pat Robertson, he ran for president. Kenneth Copeland, Jack Van Empy. The Dallas Theological Seminary as a whole teaches this pre-millennial dispensationalist end time view. About two hundred Bible institutes across the USA teach it. The Moody Institute, a Bible institute in Chicago teaches it. It's really infiltrated the Christian church in America. Right? It's the, uh, most prominent form of millennialism, dispensationalism. All flowing out of, of Darby and Schofield. In about eighteen hundred or nineteen hundred. Isn't that crazy? Really caught on, didn't it? And here we are. And I keep saying it over and over. That's all we hear on TV now. Because of things that are happening in Israel and Palestine and what's hap, what's going on there. Oh boy, that's the sign right there, right? Sorry, it's not. It's not good. Our hope doesn't lie in a piece of property halfway around the world. It lies in Christ who's gonna come down from the sky. That's what we're told. So here is a little thing I'm gonna read to you now. Uh, Seventh Day Adventist End Time Theology is very interesting. Just cutting, pasted it right off of their theological view, their statement, I guess. So I'm reading now, all right? Here we go. Seventh Day Adventist, anyone know any Seventh Day Adventists? Yeah, yeah. So this is their end time theological view. Central to Adventist eschatological view of Christ's second advent. That's a fancy word for eschatology for end time study. According, excuse me, according to Adventist teaching, Christ entered into the holy place of the heavenly temple on Good Friday and remained there for eighteen centuries to plead his blood on behalf of sinners. In eighteen forty-four, Christ entered the heavenly holy of holies to begin investigating the conduit of believers and investigate of judgment, which will last until his second advent. When people die, they become nonexistent in body and soul until his second coming. Just before Christ returns, those who were responsible for his trial and crucifixion and the faithful members of the Adventist denomination, uh, denomination who died after eighteen forty-four will be raised to see him come. At his return, Christ will destroy the beast, the false prophet and the wicked who made war against God and his people at Armageddon. Satan will have the sins of the world placed upon him as a scapegoat and will be consigned to a desolate earth for one thousand years. At the same time, all believers who died before eighteen forty-four and all non-Adventist believers who died after eighteen forty-four will be raised. All believers who are still alive will be transformed and both groups will go to heaven to rule with Christ one thousand years. During this period, Christ and the believers will rule for the purpose of investigating the lives of the unbelievers and determining the amount of suffering they will have to experience. Boy, I hope someone doesn't, uh, no one up there really doesn't like me. They're gonna determine how much I gotta suffer. After the millennium, the wicked will be raised. They will suffer in various degrees on earth. And they will be gathered by Satan for a final assault on the heavenly Jerusalem, which, uh, which has just descended. Following this, God will annihilate Satan, his evil angels and all the wicked. Christ and all believers will then live forever on the new earth. Unquote. So there's a Seventh Day Adventist view of end time theology. It's even, even a little bit further out than the supposed normal pre-millennial dispensationalist view. I mean, they've cut the, they've cut a line at eighteen forty-four. Isn't that interesting? I don't know. It must have something to do with the, uh, uh, Christ entered the holy place of the heavenly temple on Good Friday and remained there for eighteen centuries. And there it is, eighteen forty-four. I didn't do the math, but I'm assuming that's it. Interesting, isn't it? I don't know. It's ba, I, I don't, I don't know where they got any of this.
Well, true.
Yes, Paul?
It was tied to this guy named William Miller, who was a preacher at that time, who had predicted that the world was going to end in eighteen forty-four. And so a lot of this was born out of his disciples and his followers. It was a great disappointment and the masses were, had to come up with this whole other scheme why the world didn't end in eighteen forty-four.
And there's been more others. Wasn't there one in the, uh, just in the nineties or early two thousands or? I seen like a camper driving around town back at that time. Did you see that too, Suzie? And it had the, the world's gonna end on this date? Didn't end. That's why, you know, that's why we just supposed to keep our eye to the sky. Be, because First Thessalonians chapter four tells us that's what's gonna happen. I mean, so does the angels as they're standing with Jesus as he's ascending into heaven, Acts chapter one. And the disciples are like, oh, where'd he go? And then the angels said, well, he went up, but he's gonna come back the same way. So keep looking up. The Lutheran view is no different from the early Christian or the Reformation theology view. Woo, here comes the catechism. Duck everyone, here it comes. What we're gonna do is look in Luther's Small Catechism, second article of the Apostle's Creed. And there's a question here that says, what do the scriptures teach about Christ's second coming? Small catechism. It's the questions that us smart people put in the, the real Small Catechism's only about thirty pages long, you know, the, the, the one that Luther wrote, if that. Uh, but we've got these questions here. So here's what this catechism says. What do the scriptures teach about Christ's second coming? A, Christ will return visibly and with great glory on the last day. With great glory, not with war, not with wrath. And then in the catechism, there's all kinds of scriptures that back that up. That's why catechism's such a nice book. Cause anything that you find in here has scripture reference and scripture backup. B, B, what do the scriptures teach about Christ's second coming? B, Christ will return to judge the world, not to set up an earthly government. And see, that's what the pre-millennial dispensationalist, that thousand year reign, many say that's gonna be where the Christians reign on earth with Christ in a government of some sort. Nothing like that in scripture. Okay, C then, Christ will return on a specific day known by God alone. D, before Christ returns, there will be an increasing turmoil and distress for the church and the world. Now if you go to your chart, there is that area that says in each one of them that has Satan's little season. Did you see that? Each end time view of the four millennialism views, th- there's a little season of Satan in there. Y'all see that? On your chart? You don't? Towards the, follow the line all the way down right before the new heaven and the new earth. It's very small. Yeah, it's all very small, right? You guys need some longer arms or what? Shetler, you too? You fly planes dude?
It's a big sky.
Yeah, there you go. It's a big sky. Yeah, yeah, you just fly at what? Uh, odds when you go one way and evens when you go the other way or what? Okay. I learned something when I was flying that dude's plane. That was fun. Got really good flying. Uh, let's see. Okay, so D, right? That was the increasing turmoil, distress for the church and the world, that little season of Satan. I got something here to tell you, to talk to you about that. And then E is the return of Christ is a source of hope and joy for the Christian. And that was kinda my goal for this whole thing, to bring us, uh, security, hope and joy in the end times though when Jesus comes back, it's a good thing. It's a great thing. You don't have anything to worry about. You don't have to worry about wrath. You don't have to worry about judgment. You don't have to worry about his sovereignty. It's all finished. That's what he said. So that's what the catechism says about, uh, the end times. And then of course, if you got one at home, um, can look it up and read all the scripture references out, out of it. The other piece is that, and I didn't bring that, I meant to bring it down. The Augsburg Confession as well in Article seventeen is all about the return of Christ. So the reformers had things to say about that. And of course, you know, Luther was the chief of the chiefs and he already wrote it in here. And I, and, and many of the same things are in the Augsburg Confession with much more explanation. So there's another reference of the Reformation or the Lutheran view of the end times and millennialism. Christ's victory on the cross defeated and bound Satan. The reign of Christ or the millennium has already commenced. We're already in the thousand years. You're living it right now. During the millennium, which corresponds to the church age, the people of Christ reign with him upon earth. We may not seem and feel like we're reigning, but we are. We are reigning with him on earth. What's up man? What can I say? I can say wow, this is no age of heaven on earth. There's no doubt about it, right? We are reigning with Christ already on earth. You are already saints. Uh, uh, and, and Christ victorious saints are, we fight against evil. Including what John said, the apostle John in First John chapter four, verse three. He said, "The spirit of the Antichrist, which you have heard, is coming and even now is already in the world." That's First John, chapter four, verse three. He's reporting the Antichrist is already in the world. See, we're already in the thousand year millennium. It happened when Christ died on the cross and Satan was bound into the abyss. When was Satan thrown out of heaven? Was he also at that time bound and cast into the abyss? This seems to be. For after his exile from heaven and his confinement to the earth, he takes his wrath out on the wi, on the women in order to destroy her and her seed. This is from Revelation a little bit, okay? Basically what it's saying is, is that Satan is trying to destroy the church. But he's restrained and he's hindered in an attempt to destroy the church. For she is carried forth, uh, kept safe under God's protective hand. This is from a commentary, Dr. Brighton, who wrote the CPH Revelation, uh, Revelation commentary. This restraint and holding back of Satan is depicted visually by his being bound and cast into the abyss. Again, remembering that, right? We are people of words, so God has to use words to try to transport what reality is, but we don't really know what reality really is on the other side in heaven. Does that make sense? He's giving us words and syntax and sentences and paragraphs and all this stuff. So we can make pictures in our mind, but the picture is just, as Paul says, it's like looking in a piece of glass. Really you can see your outline, but you can't see it clearly. That's what all this is about. We can kinda see the outline, but we can't see it clearly. We won't know until we get there. So it's depicted visually for us of being, of Satan being bound and cast into the abyss. He was cast into the abyss so that he could no longer deceive the nations. That is, so that he couldn't destroy the church and her witness to Christ and her mission to the nations. This interpretation agrees with Jesus, with what Jesus states in the synoptic gospels about his saving ministry, the result of which was expulsion of Satan from heaven. Luke chapter ten, verse eighteen. The binding of Satan as Christ set people free from slavery to the devil. That's kinda the summary of Luke ten, eighteen. There's also Matthew twenty, uh, twelve, twenty-two. Same, the, his, uh, same as Luke's writing and then Mark chapter three, verse twenty. Also, Second Thessalonians chapter two, verse starting at seven. There, Paul reminds his hearers that the power of lawlessness under the control of Satan is restrained and held back until the Lord Christ will destroy it when he returns. Okay, so reading on here from Dr. Brighton. When the thousand years are completed, it will be necessary for the dragon to be released for a short time. Whatever the time period that the thousand years represents and whenever it takes place, what is certain is that the divine purpose for which Satan had been bound will have been complete, completed according to God's will. So that's that little season, right? Whatever this thousand years is, right? Then Satan will be unbound for this short time and whatever the divine purpose of that is, it's to carry out God's will. During the season of time when Satan is bound and hindered, the church is able to carry out her mission of proclaiming Christ to the world. But after the appointed time period, when God determines that the church's mission is completed, Satan will be released for a short time, that little season of Satan on your timelines. The short time is described in Revelation chapter twenty, verse seven. The short time is described in Revelation, chapter twenty, verse seven to ten. No answer is given as to why he will be released, except that, as it says in the text, it is necessary. To speculate why it is necessary may be a vain attempt. Safe to say that it will be according to the will of God and his eternal plan for the consummation of all things. The little season. So Satan's rebellion will be shortened. By Christ's glorious return. And we don't know. That's why too, things are so bad now, right? So it's gotta be, people are saying, it's the little season of Satan right now. It's so bad. Well, the church is still proclaiming. And according to what I read, when the little Satan, time of Satan comes, or that little season of Satan, it's gonna be really tough for us to probably even gather. Cause it's all about the proclamation of Jesus Christ. That's what, that's what Dr. Brighton said. And I think that's what Revelation says. If we keep in mind what we're about. Grace and mercy, grace and truth? Alright. So this view of the end times called amillennialism has only. One raising of the dead. That's our view. Only has one return of Christ. It discourages us from hoping for any glorious or political powerful. Uh, uh, heaven up to, uh, upon earth in the millennialism time. Our view, the amillennialism view is simpler than the premillennialism. It fits the Bible and early Christians as they recorded what they believed. Specifically in the apostles creed. And what the reformation writers also. Agreed on and wrote on. So we have the three creeds that talks nothing about a thousand year reign. Going to the catechism again. If you have yours, it's on page one forty-seven. You guys don't have your catechisms? Well. The third article. I believe in the Holy Spirit, the Holy Christian Church, the communion of saints, the forgiveness of sins, the resurrection of the body and the life everlasting. Now, in my mind, if a millennial period of a thousand years specifically would been a truth back then, it would have been in here, right? I mean, it, it would have said, the resurrection of the body, the thousand year millennium and life everlasting. What does this mean? I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord, or come to him. But the Holy Spirit has called me by the gospel, enlightened me with his gifts sanctified. And kept me in the true faith in the same way he calls, gathers, enlightens and sanctifies the whole Christian church on earth. And keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith in this Christian church. He daily and richly forgives all my sins. And the sins of all believers. On the last day, he will raise me and all the dead and give eternal life to me and all believers in Christ. This is most certainly true. So on top of it all, we have the creeds. Right, the historic church that's on our side. Okay, pausing. How many slides did I miss? Gotta rotate my batteries. That would be the next topic. The rapture. If you want to, you can go to First Thessalonians, chapter four. First Thessalonians, chapter four. Now, the term rapture or caught up comes from First Thessalonians, chapter four, verse seventeen. It says, "After that, we who are still alive and are left will be caught up." And caught up is where we get the word rapture. Together with them in the clouds to meet the Lord in the air. So prior to Darby's influence. And Schofield's influence, most Christians understood that the rapture was an event. That would happen simultaneously with the final resurrection of Jesus at the end of the world. Yet Darby and Schofield, they. Repositioned, if you will, to take it to the place at the end of the era of the church, instead of the end of the world. They're at the end of the church age, just before the tribulation. And then again, repeating myself kinda, he then taught, they, they taught that the end of, uh. That at the end of the seven years of tribulation, Christ is gonna return and he's gonna defeat the antichrist. And it's gonna commence the seventh dispensation, the millennium, the thousand years. Uh, for Darby and what he was teaching, it was a glorious reign on earth for those thousand years with Christ and all believers. So. How many returns of Christ will there be? Well, let's just take a look at a couple of scripture references. Go to Daniel, chapter twelve. Daniel, chapter twelve. Daniel twelve, one and two. At that time, Michael, the great prince who protects your people will ro- will arise. There will be a time of distress such as not happened from the beginning of nations until then. But at that, at that time, your people, everyone whose name is found written in the book will be delivered. Multitudes who sleep in the dust of the earth will awake, some to everlasting life, others to shame and everlasting contempt. Nothing about a reign on earth, right? Just what's gonna happen? Everyone whose name is written in the book. And if you're covered by the blood of Jesus, I guess we could say, then you are in the book and you will. Arise. Or if you're still alive, then you'll meet Jesus in the air. But as Thessalonians says, and Paul writes that the dead in Christ are gonna rise first. Okay, that one makes sense? Let's try, uh, Matthew, chapter twenty-five then. Thirty-one, starting at verse thirty-one. So we got Matthew twenty-five, starting at verse thirty-one. Twenty-five, thirty-one, going to forty-six. The sheep and the goats is the heading on my Bible. When the son of man comes in his glory and all the angels with him, he will sit on the throne in heavenly glory. All the nations will be gathered before him and he will separate the people. One from another, as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will put the sheep on his right and the goats on his left. Then the king will say to those on his right, "Come, you who are blessed by my father, take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world." For I was hungry and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty. You gave me something to drink. I was. A stranger and you invited me in. I needed clothes and you clothed me. I was sick. And you looked after me. I was in prison. You came to visit me. Then, then the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when did we see you hungry, feed you or thirst and give you something to drink? When did we see you a stranger, invite you in or needing clothes and clothed you? When did you see the sick and, or in prison and go visit you?" The king will rely, the king will reply. "I tell you the truth, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers of mine, you did for me." Then he will say to those on his left, "Depart from me, you who are cursed into the eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels. For I was hungry and you gave me nothing to eat. I was thirsty. You gave me nothing to drink. I was a stranger and you did not invite me in. I needed clothes and you did not clothe me. I was sick and in prison and you did not look after me." They also will answer, "Lord, when did you see you hungry or thirsty or a stranger and needing clothes or sick or in prison and did not help you?" He will reply, "I tell you the truth, whatever you did not fo- do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me." Then they will throw, uh, will be, they will go away to eternal punishment, but the righteous to eternal life. Whoo, that's long. Pretty straightforward, I guess. Jesus there talking about what's gonna happen at the end is gonna be a judgment. Not one judgment, not two judgments, not three, or there's gonna be one, not two, not three, not four. Every time there's a rapture, there's gotta be a judgment. If you take the Christians up, he's, there's a judgment. And according to what I read you at the beginning about the books, some Christians stay. And they're staying, they, they are to, called to stay behind to spread the message. So again, the idea of the premillennial dispensationalist is that the coming of Jesus is gonna occur in several phases. And that first rapture of their view is a, is a secret rapture. Just like I read in the book, right? Flight, planes are gonna be flying, people are gonna be gone. Cars are gonna be driving, people are gonna be gone. You're gonna be at the store, uh, someone's gonna be checking your, weighing your apples that you bought at Hy-Vee. And the cashier is gonna disappear. How you gonna pay? Oh, okay. I'll give you a call tomorrow. I'll get some material. Just in case they do rapture, yeah. So again, prior to eighteen thirty or so. And when Darby's teaching started, uh, taking hold, there was no secret rapture. There was only one end time judgment and rapture. Alright. Well, let's look at Philippians, chapter two. I think that's a good one to look at. Philippians two, ten and eleven. Philippians two, ten and eleven. Kinda reminds me of the historic creeds again, as I said. They talk about one final eschatological event. It's a big word. Or the second or the final co- coming of Christ. Which is equating to what the dispensationalists call rapture. Yeah, there's gonna be a rapture. That's what Paul says in First Thessalonians, chapter four. Gonna be a rapture. We don't deny that. But it all happens once. And here's what Paul says, Philippians, chapter two, uh, verse ten and eleven. That in the name of Jesus. Every knee should bow in heaven and on earth and under the earth. And every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God the Father. Every tongue. Every knee will bow, right? Not some who are just left on earth. Every knee will bow. When he comes on the clouds. Everyone will know. Be one day, one hour, one resurrection of the dead. Let's take a look at Acts, chapter seventeen, verse thirty-one. I jotted that one down here and I don't remember what it is. Seventeen, thirty-one. Patty, you waiting for Elena? Oh, I embarrassed her. Oh, you were here last, you were over there, uh, last Wednesday. I was just gonna say, I won't do that again. Seventeen, Acts seventeen, verse thirty-one. For he was, has sent a day when he will judge the world with justice by the man he has appointed. He has given proof to this by all men by rising him from the dead. He set a day when he will judge the world with justice. Okay, and. He has given proof of this by raising Jesus from the dead. So there's the, uh, New Testament, post Pentecost view of end time. One day, one hour, one resurrection. One rapture. Okay, uh, let's see. Oh, there's the answer. You can look at Acts twenty-four, fifteen as well, if you wish. Just another one of those one that verifies this mindset of this new preaching now of the apostles post Pentecost, when things came clear, right? Jesus opened the scriptures. Who will see Christ when he returns? Who will see him when he returns? Well, we can look at Daniel, chapter seven. Should've told you to keep your finger back there, right Max? Daniel, chapter seven, verse thirteen. Might have to start wrapping her up here for this time. Seven thirteen, Daniel, seven thirteen. It's in that wonderful section, you know? Of the Great Commission parallel, basically of, uh, Matthew twenty-eight. Here's the Old Testament version of the Great Commission. I'm gonna start at verse eleven. "When I continued to watch because of the boastful words, the horn was speaking. I kept looking. Until the beast was slain and its body destroyed and thrown into the blazing fire. The other beasts had been stripped off of their authority, but were allowed to live for a period of time. In my vision at night, I looked and there before me was one like a son of man coming with the clouds of heaven. He approached the ancient of days and was led into his presence. He was given authority, glory, sovereign power. All people, nations and men of every language worshipped him. His dominion is an everlasting dominion that will not pass away, and his kingdom is one that will never be destroyed. In my vision at night, I looked and there before me was one like a son of man coming with the clouds of heaven." Jesus. He's coming in the clouds of heaven. How about Luke twenty-one? Luke twenty-one. Twenty-one, twenty-seven. Luke twenty-one, twenty-seven. At that time, they will see the son of man coming in a cloud with power and great glory. When these things start to take place, stand up and lift up your heads. Because your redemption is drawing near. I think we'll end right there for tonight. No biblical evidence of a secret rapture. And that's what we'll start next time. Any questions? Yes, Danica? The answer to the question is that there's no biblical evidence of a secret rapture. That, uh, let's see. Why don't I just give you the answer the next time? Let's start there. Think about that. Who will see Christ when he returns? Everyone! Everyone will, but I can give you the theological answer next time. Alright, let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time to gather your word at the center of these dear saints who desire. To learn more of theological truths of the end times. Thank you for the opportunity. Be with us as we go our separate ways. Bless our day tomorrow. Give us opportunity to share your message of forgiveness, love, peace and joy. To someone that may need it. We pray in your name, amen. to someone that may need it. We pray in your name, amen. Thank you all much.